National Grid Gas, Southern Ottery, Bayview Street, River Street, Moore Street, Graham Street, and Silver Street. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition on this specific issue to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So seeing that there are no further public comment is come to the podium, I will close this public hearing at 6:31. And we'll be at 6:35 for the next National Grid Change of Utility Grant of Location. Okay, we're back for the second public hearing. I'd like to call to order the October 7th, 6:35 public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-110 Utility Grant Location, National Grid Gas, Willits Street from Copeland Street to I-93 to Reshudi Drive. So at this point, I'd like to ask someone wishing to speak in favor or opposition on this specific issue to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So seeing nobody approaching the podium, seeing no further public comment, I would like to close this hearing at 6:36. And we'll be back at 6:40 for the final Grant of Location hearings. Thank you. Okay, we're back again for the final public hearing on Grant of Locations. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-111 Utility Grant of Location, National Grid Gas, Furnace Brook Parkway at Lafayette Street. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition on this specific issue to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So seeing that nobody is coming to the podium and seeing no further public comment, I would like to close this hearing at 6:41. And we'll be back for what's next on the agenda? The Ordinance Committee? Yes. At 6:45. Thanks.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 7th Ordinance Committee meeting. Madam Chair, could you hold the role, please?
Counselor Ash, Counselor King. Counselor Campbell.
President.
Counselor DeBona, Counselor Devine.
President.
Counselor Harris.
President.
Counselor Liang.
President.
Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Mitten.
President.
Eight members.
Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. It's tendencies are therefore advised as such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Thank you. We're going to start tonight's meeting with two public hearings, one scheduled for 6:45 and one scheduled for 6:50. We'll start with the one scheduled for 6:45. And here are public comments around Ordinance Number 2024-041, Ordinance Amending Zoning MBTA Bus Yard at 954 Hancock Street to Open Space. As a reminder for folks, public hearings are for folks to be heard. It's not an opportunity for my colleagues to engage. So again, just to set the ground here, we're here to hear from the public during this public hearing on this particular matter. So with that said, I'd like to invite those who would wish to speak in favor to come up and state your name and address. And if you don't want to come up, but want to support, you can sign a sheet in the back in favor. And I just want to let folks know that either in favor or against, that we're going to have public comments limited to two minutes. And so once you begin, I'll make sure to start the timers so that we're all aware of the timing. So again, we're going to start with those who'd like to speak in favor.
Hi there. Maria Mulligan, 21 Winthrop Ave. I speak for myself, independent of any other advocates. I'm here to share some thoughts on the--
I'm sorry, would you guys just say your name and your address for the record, please?
Oh, sure. Maria Mulligan, 21 Winthrop Ave. I'm here to share some thoughts on the proposed change at the old MBTA Bus Yard next to Veterans Stadium. I believe the change from residential to open space for this parcel is prudent decision because it gives us the opportunity to fix some environmental deficiencies and enhance the functionality of the stadium. So I'll get into a little bit of detail. Regarding the environmental deficiencies, in my opinion, I believe that the selection of this site way back when for a bus yard was misguided, given that it bounds an environmentally sensitive marsh lands in the mouth of the Furnace Brook. Both play a critical role in flood mitigation and resiliency. With 50 years of it being a bus yard, it is likely that the soils are contaminated and some of which leach into the marsh. That's not acceptable. Quincy should demand that the state perform an environmental assessment and restore the site to its original natural condition before the bus yard was even there, including removing the bus yard structures and pavement. Further, it should be designated with a protection of Article 97 to match the protections of the adjacent historic stadium to prevent it from development forever. Restoring our natural environment is of utmost importance to mitigate climate change. Over the past four years, Quincy has removed acres of mature trees in many of the recent projects, Cemetery, Marymount Park, Forbes Hill Park, the Golf Course. This is unfortunate. A century-old tree is irreplaceable. We must stop removing trees, but we must build our forests for the next generation. So let's seriously consider reforesteding this I'm not speaking in favor or not. I'm trying to give you some ideas. I have more ideas. Okay. I didn't finish.
Favor of this ordinance? In favor? Going once? Going twice? Okay. Now I'd like to invite those who'd like to come up to speak against, again, speak against this ordinance. And then for those who wouldn't like to speak, would like to sign in opposition, can sign in the paper in the back. Hi. If you could just state your name and address for the record, and then we'll start the two minutes.
My name is Pam Brennan. I live at 65 Dickens Street in Quincy.
Thanks, Pam.
Thanks. I'm neither for nor against. I just, we have questions, and I just would like you guys to do some research on this before you decide to make a vote. I know zoning this, the MBTA owns this land, so by zoning it to open space, that really makes it hard for them to sell it. Does that mean we take it at eminent domain? Do we have to pay them money? It's been, I think I saw on the assessor's website, it was valued at like around 14 million. And then you have the cleanup because it's also environmentally unsafe. It's one of the oldest facilities the MBTA has, so I'm sure there's a lot of contaminants in there. And again, it's at the Upper Black Creek Marsh, so I'm concerned about who's going to do the cleanup? Is Quincy residents going to have to pay for that? So before you make a decision either way, and there doesn't seem to be a rush here because they're still using the bus barn there. Also, Mayor Koch is on the Board of Directors of the MBTA, so I don't understand, do they agree with this? I mean, is this something that comes up at the Board of Directors meetings? Is this something that they're working out there? So I think it would only be fair, there seems to be a lot of connections there that we would be aware of that as the public. I've tried to Google like what the thoughts are around this with the MBTA, and I can't. I've heard rumors that they're not really crazy about that idea, but I don't really know. And I know we only have two minutes here, but we should have three, like the school committee. It would only be fair since you don't really hear our comments that often, so that would be nice.
Going once? No, so this is again, a public hearing, which entails the public to come up to be heard, not for us to deliberate. Once we get through the public hearing portion, that's when the ordinance meeting opens up for deliberation amongst the council and any presenters that are set up ahead of time.
How do I get you the rest of my comments?
You can send it to us through an email.
Will you respond?
Maria, thank you for your time. You and I have engaged offline plenty of times, and so doing that during a formal session, when there are rules that are, that we have to abide by, I don't think is appropriate or respectful. So I appreciate that, but again, I'm going to stick to what portion I'm at now, which is offering an opportunity for those who would like to speak against this particular item. Would anybody else like to speak against this item? Okay, with that, we're going to close the portion, this portion of the public hearing at 6:52 PM and roll right into the next ordinance item, which is 2024-089, Ordinance Amending Chapter 175 Hazardous Materials, Adding Section 6 Hazardous Chemicals, Registration Fees, Fines, and Response Costs. So again, this public hearing portion is just for this specific ordinance item. I'd like to invite those who'd like to speak in favor of this particular ordinance to come up and state your name and your address. And if you don't want to, but want to show your support for this ordinance item, you can sign your name in the back. Okay? Anybody wishing to speak against this specific ordinance? Again, please come up, state your name and your address for the record. And if you want to sign in opposition, you can sign the paper in the back. Okay, with that, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and open up the regular Ordinance Committee meeting for discussion at 7:00 PM. All right, good evening. Welcome back to Ordinance Committee meeting. We're going to go ahead and move into the discussion of these two ordinances. The first, which is 2024-041, Ordinance Amending Zoning MBTA Bus Yard at 954 Hancock Street to Open Space. Before I open it up to my colleagues for questions and comments, I'd like to turn it over to the Mayor's Chief of Staff, Mr. Walker, for some background information, and then we'll open it up for deliberation. Mr. Walker?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you very much. Good evening, councilors. It's my pleasure to speak a little tonight on behalf of Mayor Koch on the proposed rezoning of 954 Hancock Street from its current Residence Z, Residence D, excuse me, district to making it part of the adjacent open space district that covers Veterans Stadium and the entirety of Marymount Park. As you know, this property, about 3.7 acres, 164,000 square feet, has served as the MBTA's bus depot, serving much of our area for many decades now. You also know that T is in the process of building a new state-of-the-art bus depot on Bergen Parkway in South Quincy that was most previously home to the Lowe's Home Improvement Store prior to its purchase by the MBTA. That new facility will replace the Hancock Street Depot in its entirety, leaving the property available for reuse. This rezoning proposal, which received a positive recommendation from the planning board, is the first in what we hope will be a three-step process that will ultimately lead to the property being used for a benefit to the community, specifically our young people. What this rezoning will do is incorporate the property in the much larger surrounding properties of open space, including the stadium, Adams Field, Mitchell McCoy Field, Pageant Field, Upper Marymount Park, Welch Field, and the associated passive open space areas, all of which were gifted to this community by Charles Francis Adams. While we all understand the important role the MBTA has and continues to play in our community, I don't think I'm being overly critical when I say this spot was never a great place for this kind of operation. It's right in the heart of the city. It's been an eyesore. It's dirty. It's a dirty operation, unnecessarily so. And it certainly never quite fit in with the beautiful historic areas that surround it. It's the mayor's hope, together with Counsel Mitten and discussions we've had with a number of members of this body, that that's going to change. The mayor has mentioned some initial thoughts on what could take place at the former bus depot, but that's really the last of the three steps. First, we need to rezone the property. Then will come acquisition from the state and the MBTA, and then the reuse. As I noted, the key element that we know right now is community use. The key concept is community use that ties the property into the existing facilities in some way. Beyond that, there will be a substantive community process, engagement with all potential stakeholders. The opportunities are very exciting, but again, excuse me, first things first, we do have a little time, as the T is expected to occupy the new facility on Bergen Parkway in 2027. And that also makes it now the perfect time to begin this process, rezone the property, and capture that opportunity before it's too late. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions the body may have.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments on this item. And Counsel Campbell?
Just one quick one. Is there a timeframe for when the 954 will become vacant? Like, is there, is there a, you know, will they stop moving things over? I know the completion is 2027, but is there a date that they'll be out of Hancock?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman. My sense, Counsel Campbell, is that that facility doesn't cease to operate in its entirety until they are fully in the Bergen Parkway location. I would assume that yes, there's probably going to be some transfer. Some things will move over early, some things will move over later. But that line of demarcation is going to be when that Bergen Parkway facility is 100% operational, and they no longer need the Wallaston Bus Depot for any use. That's sort of what we're looking at as the outside date.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go to Counsel Harris and then Counsel DeBona. Counsel Harris?
I just would like probably ask the city solicitor whether or not I work, I am presently an employee of the state of Massachusetts, and this is an MBTA situation. Is it prudent that I abstain from any vote on this matter? I know I abstained from when we had the issue with the courthouse coming in front. So that's just my concern. The MBTA falls underneath my boss, Governor Hailey, so I just don't know if that's, if there's a conflict or not.
Absolutely.
I'd rather be safe than sorry.
No, of course, and thank you for being so transparent and flagging that, Counsel Harris. Mr. Solicitor, could you comment on that for our council, please?
I mean, this involves some consideration. I'd rather have some time to consider it. Who's your employer?
My employer is Mara Hailey, the governor of Massachusetts. She, the MBTA, I don't work for the MBTA, but it falls under the state of Massachusetts, and I work for the state.
What department are you in, then? I'm sorry.
For instance, I fall under DCAM. And DCAM, just as I abstained, they were part of the courthouse, so they're part of all the building, a lot of the buildings across, if not all of the buildings and structures across the state.
Well, I'm pretty certain that you would have no conflict if you worked for DCAM. DCAM's a state agency. They were directly involved. When I did the PNS and the D and all the work for the courthouse, it was directly with DCAM. The T is what's referred to as an independent body politic. It's a subject of, it was created under special legislation. It's kind of like the Turnpike Authority. So it's completely independent from the Commonwealth in that respect, has its own leadership board. Someone mentioned a little earlier, one of the speakers, about the mayor's involvement, and we went through a process with the mayor's involvement at the T through state ethics. So the mayor's out on something like this that involves the city, but I do not believe you would be. I don't see a conflict because, as I said, the T is an independent body politic. But if you want me to take a look at that, I'm happy to look at it a little more carefully, but I'm pretty certain that that'll be the outcome of my finding. But you should get this in writing anyway. Do we, are we just introducing this tonight? Is this?
It depends, whatever happens after deliberation, typically after any conversation, it's--
It's going to be deliberation.
So I would imagine, excuse me--
No, no, of course, not to please.
To be safe than sorry, an abstention is neither a yes vote or a no vote, so I'm sure out of the rest of the yada-yoo folks, you'll make the right call.
Yep. Sounds good.
Right, and to be, to be completely cautious, when you're going to recuse, which is what you're suggesting, you should get up and leave the well during the deliberation. So you could get up and can either sit in the audience or go out back. And then anytime this matter is before the body, you should get up and absent yourself.
Well, I was asking first, so I'm, I certainly, I wouldn't mind going down to McDonald's and maybe getting something. I wouldn't mind getting up. I think I've done it before, go down to McDonald's and get something to eat, you know.
Well, what works.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you.
Counselor, so yes, before we deliberate any further--
Do I have to leave now? Do I have to leave now?
Well, we are in deliberation, so I would suggest that. And then just grab me a McDouble with mac sauce? That'd be great.
All good. That's all right. Twelve beef patties.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel DeBona, if you could just wait until Counsel Harris leaves the room. Thank you. Thanks, Counsel DeBona. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple, just quick comments. You know, this is a butts Veterans Memorial Stadium where we, we have a lot of events for recreation and parks, as well as the Barry Welch Field and the Adams Field across the way. And then a few years ago, relocation of the Doughboy on the Hancock Furnace Brook Corner, this, this open space rezoning that's in front of us. I know that prior to Counsel Mitten, Counsel Phelan had worked with this prior, a few years ago, to obviously get to this point with the reconstruction of the, the former Lowe's site. It's coming along pretty fast. It's going up every day. So I just feel that it's very, very vital here as our city grows, as we grow even higher, that we continue to preserve and have more open space throughout the city of Quincy. I mean, we're a city, but continuously putting in these type of parks and open spaces helps, helps our, our city. And I'm looking forward to the future discussions on what we actually have in mind. But being the Community Preservation Committee representative for the last nine years, I mean, this is, this is a win-win for that, that, that committee and what we do here in the future. So I'd like, if I could, if there's any more, through you to Mr. Walker, if there's any more, I'd like to make a motion. Are we allowed to make a motion to approve? I'd like to make a motion to approve.
And we don't need a second in committee? This is just, again, a motion made within committee? So I'd like to accept that motion. Counsel Mitten?
Quick question, Mr. Walker?
Please.
Are there any early plans for that use, for youth?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman, Counsel. It's a great question. As I alluded to in the opening, definitely something, the initial thoughts, concepts, all very preliminary, but looking toward something that is complementary to the uses that are already there. The concept of an athletic facility, a field house type of thing, that would have opportunities for our young people inside as opposed to outside. We have a, a number of outside venues in that area, something that could be inside. But again, I don't want to go too far down that road only because we, we know that we want the property protected. This protects that property. And then we can have a substantive discussion about what it wants to be, but most definitely community use, most definitely for our young people. Those are the two things that are really stuck out in the discussions we have had to date. But what exactly it wants to be, I think the world is our oyster. It's a, it's a great piece of property if done correctly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. President King?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just when you, when you talk about protecting the property, this is, I don't think I heard this yet, but so that the MBTA can't, in effect, take the parcel that they're currently utilizing and sell it. Is that accurate?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman, I would, I want to be careful on, on that, on how we address that. This would require specific uses at that site. It would restrict certain uses to the degree that that would restrain the MBTA from selling that property is not our concern. Our concern is the proactive use of the property. But, you know, from a practical standpoint, yes, rezoning a property to open space puts a certain amount of limits on what you can do at that property, and therefore it could implicate a sale.
So would this, this doesn't take effect immediately, then? Is there sort of a timestamp with, because they're going to continue to operate it as the bus depot? So if it's--
Yeah.
--open space, would that limit their current usage?
No, it would not. Through you, Madam Chairwoman, no, it would not. The, the use is the use. This only applies to the actual zoning that exists on the property. I mean, for, for example, right now, the zoning is Residence D, and they're running a bus, a bus depot out of, out of Residence D. That the, the use supersedes the zone if it is an existing use. So the use would continue until such time as that use is no longer applicable at the site.
Okay. Okay. And then, so, so basically, at some point in time, when the bus depot and Wallaston ceases to be used for that purpose, there will need to be a transaction from the city to acquire that property.
Correct.
Before we can do anything that we seek to for the young people.
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right. So at this point, though, there's no commitment to, there's no obligation for, for a financial commitment at this time. This is just to re-designate an air property.
Through you, Madam Chairwoman, yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, there is a motion, but if I could, I'd like to just ask a couple of follow-up questions to Mr. Walker. So, Mr. Walker, just going back to timeline and understanding what's going to happen within those different benchmarks we talked about. Again, you know, with this process, it allows us the opportunity to rezone for future use. Even after that's done, there's still an acquisition process that has to potentially happen, whether or not that goes through. If it does, then it's a process of actually figuring out what that new site's going to entail, correct?
Through you, Madam Chairwoman.
That's like 20,000-foot view, right?
Twenty thousand feet, but it, 20,000 feet, yes, but that does not mean that two of the processes aren't going to happen potentially in parallel, that while we're talking about the acquisition, that we are talking about potential specific reuse at the same time. So when that date does hit, we're ready as fast as we can. It does seem like a long time from now, 2027, but it's really not. So I think it would behoove the community, the administration, this, this body, and the, and the stakeholders, residents, to begin that process, to start talking about what it, it wants to be at that site.
Sure. Yeah, no, I, that, that's what I kind of figured was between that second and third step, it'd sort of be happening at the same time or simultaneously, or, you know, in support of one another. Now, I know that this is not our first rodeo with the MBTA. I have my feelings about them that I'll keep to myself for now. But in the past, when we've had interactions with them and had to work with them on projects, we held them to task on community engagement opportunities that were, you know, provided with translation services, interpretation services, notices sent out well ahead of time, meetings held here in the community as well as here in the chambers. And so I just want to make sure that, you know, this process is, is the same, right? The track record, again, that we have with the MBTA projects is that we have many layers of community meetings in many locations, and I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to address concerns with them as well throughout this process.
Yeah. Through you, Madam Chairwoman, I, I do ultimately see this as a city-driven process once that, once and if there's agreement on acquisition and, and the city's goals, that ultimately those goals become a city-driven process. They become city-driven community meetings. They become city-driven engagement, not so much the tea. Quite frankly, the tea, if they're just going to, if they're going to turn over the property, they're going to turn over the property. They got a lot of stuff to do, so they're not going to be actively engaged in the reuse. The key component of getting, of getting to that place with the MBTA is the, is the turnover of the property and how that has worked out in the, in the, in the months and years ahead.
Understood. Okay. Sounds like we'll have more control then, rather than being at their mercy. Okay, good. Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to go back to you before we ask for.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ms. Chair, Madam Chair.
One of the chairs.
Yeah, I, I did, of course, I'm sure you're thinking through these as you're trying to deliberate what could be done with the parcel, but seeking remediation for prior usage of that property is probably a huge component of this.
That is correct, Counselor. Uh, through you, Madam Chairwoman, all those discussions, what you've mentioned remediation, the structures, what's there now is subject to discussion and negotiation with the MBTA. I want to be careful on, you know, how far I go on that, on what the city's position is on, on that. But it's absolutely the forefront. Everyone knows that's a, based upon the operation there over the last five decades, what's probably in that ground. So we know we, there's going to be some work to be done, and that's going to be part of the discussion with the MBTA as we go down this road.
Great. And I don't think, did you reference this letter from the planning board?
I didn't, but please, I actually marked off one of the areas talking about relax. So please, no.
No, no, there's a, there's a letter here from the planning board, just advocating for supporting this measure. They looked at this proposed zoning district conversion and provided a recommendation five to zero on, in August. So.
Yes.
That's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, so there's a motion for a favorable recommendation out of committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on to the next ordinance item, ordinance number 2024-089. Ordinance amending Chapter 175 hazardous materials, adding Section 6 hazardous chemicals, registration fees, fines, and response costs. And with us this evening, we have Ally here with us. Hi, Ally, how are you? I'd like to go to you first, if we could, and then I'll open it up to my colleagues for questions and deliberation.
Okay, can you hear me? Oh, here we go. Okay, Madam Chair, good evening, counselors. Thank you for having me in this evening. I'm going to provide an overview of proposed ordinance on hazardous materials, licensing, filing fees, and recovery costs. The purpose of the ordinance is to strengthen the city's emergency preparedness and enhancing chemical reporting. So this is the current configuration of hazardous material oversight in the state. It's based on the 1986 federal law, EPRA, Emergency Planning and Community Right to Know Act, that mandates hazardous chemicals be reported to the state and also the local level. Down below, we have the reporting thresholds, which is 10,000 pounds of hazardous chemicals, or 500 pounds or less for extremely hazardous substances, depending upon the type of substance as defined by the EPA. So this is a statewide chemical reporting, current laws. The state of Massachusetts, through the Mass CIRC run by MIMA, requires that all chemical reports be sent to our office, Quincy Emergency Management, the Quincy Fire Department, and also the state CIRC. However, there's no current licensing or filing fees in, in place in Massachusetts, which currently causes a lapse of, at the local level, to enforce non-reporting or underreporting of chemicals. There's more than 30 states worldwide, currently nationwide, that have filing fees for hazardous chemicals. There's an example of several states up there, municipalities, Chicago, Los Angeles, and currently 20 in Massachusetts. Most of those are in Franklin and Barnstable Counties. Some of the hazards in a community without chemical filing fees in place, there's really no mechanism to track chemicals from facilities that open up without our knowledge. Also make it difficult for spawns to know how to plan response. And then there's the, the potential for underreporting facilities that, without licensing fees or fines in place, might underreport what's actually on hand. And here are some of the key provisions of the proposed ordinance. We require a registration fee for any facility in the city storing hazardous materials. Enables the city to find companies that failed to report. Provides a method of reimbursement to the city for any expenses expended during the response to any type of hazardous materials, accident or spill, and provides clarification of inspection procedures. Here are the proposed fees. It'll be 150 per reportable chemical per year, 300 per extremely hazardous substance, and there would be a $1,000 fee for any facility that has more than 1,000 correction, 1 million pounds of a chemical at their location. And the billing timeline beginning in June 2025 would be June 1st, payments due to the city by August 1st. Currently, there's 35 facilities in the city that report chemicals, 111 total at the 35 facilities. Types of chemicals that we have in the city, flammable and non-flammable gases, combustible liquids and corrosives, and 15 other facilities have 22 different types of extremely hazardous substances. These are proposed fines for violations, up to $300 a day for failing to report chemicals, and then also for failure to update chemicals within 30 days, which is currently part of the federal regulation. This is an overview of the reimbursement cost recovery. This would essentially say that any facility that had an accident, whether it be a release or a spill, they would be required to reimburse the city for any of the costs related to that, whether it be mitigation methods that were utilized or materials. Currently, this is a mass state law under MGL 21E. This just kind of clearly defines at the local level. And here's an overview of the current enforcement inspection authority that's in place. These are the departments in the city that are able to inspect facilities for hazardous materials, the fire department, emergency management, police, health department, and wherever else we determine. This would also clarify the inspection and shut down procedures for any type of facilities that were observed conducting risky activities. Some of the benefits to the city ensures enhanced emergency preparedness, strengthen first, first responder safety and effective response, and also any fees collected through this fund would go into the revolving account, which is specifically earmarked for, for first responder training, equipment, and response planning. So that concludes my brief. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ally. I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for questions and comments, Mr. President. Go ahead, and then Counselor Devine.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ally. This is wild. So, I mean, this is really novel and innovative, it sounds like, for a municipality to be implementing such measures for safety protections around chemicals. How, in this supposed green state that we live in, do we not have state measures to protect violators of chemical products in our environment in Massachusetts?
Good question, Counselor. Glad you asked that. So the MIMA CIRC, the State Emergency Response Commission, I've been a voting member of that committee for six years, has not implemented any type of state filing fees, although it's been recommended multiple times. So it's causing municipalities like, like Quincy and their emergency management department to try and, you know, propose an ordinance like this.
Because, you know, we're a state that is currently in the process of eliminating landfills in Massachusetts. So by 2030, there won't be any landfills in Massachusetts to dump waste. And that's because we're giving off this, the optics that, you know, we're, we're green and we're going to be a zero-waste state. However, this is a gaping hole. I mean, this is the difference between having nice thoughts about being green and the reality of keeping our environment sound, right, and safe and thriving.
Hundred percent.
So, um, what are, are there organizations right now that actively use these chemicals or like amounts of chemicals that you're proposing to essentially regulate in the city of Quincy that we should have been concerned about before?
I wouldn't say concerned, but they are here. There are a couple of large facilities, companies, that produce and manufacture hazardous chemicals on a daily basis. And there's a lot of different type of hazardous materials moving in and out of there by ship, by rail, by truck, every day, and there could be a mishap. And then also, there's changes in the quantities on hand every day of how much is there.
And so how are you going to manage enforcement? Like, how are you going to manage, from soup to nuts, applying, you know, letting us know that you are carrying, transporting these chemicals? What the amount, you know, how, how can we create honesty in this program?
So the federal law, the EPRA law, the 1986 law states that they have 30 days, within 30 days to report any significant changes in quantities on hand to the state.
So do you know from a federal database who are processing chemicals?
No, because they're supposed to report that to the state as well, and we don't get notified. So this would notify us locally if there was a significant change of oil, gasoline, hazardous chemicals in any of the facilities in the city. And if they didn't report the, the chemicals on hand and the changes within 30 days, we could find them.
Okay.
Or shut them down.
So, but your team is not, I mean, do we have that many businesses that are processing chemicals that would require more resources for your team?
No, I just think, you know, more oversight, more inspections, more, more checking in with these facilities and making sure that we know where the chemicals are, where, how they're stored, and ensuring that we're able to find them if we need to.
Yeah. Well, this is a gaping hole that I'm grateful that you've recognized and are trying to fill here in the city. Again, novel and innovative approach to solving a true problem, because this is crazy that the state doesn't have any measures to protect its residents around such an important environmental issue. Anecdotally, there was a movie that I caught recently called Dark Waters. Did you see it?
I did.
Yeah.
I looked up, yeah.
And for everyone at home, this is a movie about consistent chemical, you know, environmental waste being deposited in places like West Virginia and Ohio, leading to cancer causes all over the place in its residents and population. And for years, large corporations are doing this. And so there were obviously class action lawsuits and everything that were, that backfilled, but it's still, this is a, a good place to tackle such an important issue for the health concern. Are you collaborate, will you collaborate with, with Marley, with Commissioner Casely on this?
Yeah, so the fire department, health department would be involved.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Devine?
Director Sloman, thank you very much for coming out. Thank you for giving your time in your office, you know, last month and talking about this. It's very important to the city, but also to Counselor Ash and myself. I believe we'll probably have some of the bigger companies that would have chemicals like that, talking about the bus station and Counselor Minton's. We're talking about chemicals, again, that maybe were improperly stored. So Raytheon was at Home Depot. Some of those test well sites are now being closed, but that's 20 or 30 years later that there are still contaminants in the readings. So I think this is great, not just for the environment, but I like the fact that we should have a better understanding of exactly what's there for first responders and not just the fire department, the police department, you know, ambulance drivers, things of that nature. It, it sounds like you're going to be able to enforce certain rules that you have stated here that you'll be keeping, but, you know, you'll get better records on what's actually on hand, which sounds like that you're already kind of have these things, but this way you'll be able to get in there and, and make sure and confirm. And I think it's great. It also doesn't look like it's any real financial burden to any type of business. It's not like we're going to be making them have a financial loss. So you're talking about 30 or so things in the total estimated fees are going to be about $8,000 diluted between them. It's great. So thank you very much. Appreciate all the effort.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ash?
Thank you, Director Sloman. This is very knowledgeable. This is very informative, I should say. And we've spoken a couple of times briefly about this, the potential of this plan. It's nice to see it on paper, namely, in the Full River area will mainly affect two big players, which are Sprague Energy and Twin Rivers Technology. And I'm really happy to have this plan in place, although, as we've discussed, some of this is happening voluntarily behind the scenes. To be able to have the, the strings, should that, should the voluntary, you know, behavior or the, the main example we spoke about would be first responding, first responders going to these facilities. So if there's X amount of fires, God forbid, per year at a facility, they, they, in turn, compensate the city for, for those services. So having that plan in place with the rest of this, with the rest of this plan, I think is great. And it really does, again, echoing Counselor Kane and Counselor Devine set, set us apart from other municipalities. So thank you. I appreciate this. And I look forward to seeing more plans and it evolve as we get into implementation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Motion to approve, Mr. President. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues before we move forward? Counselor Minton?
Thanks for coming. This is very important for public safety. You mentioned the fire department is very well aware of the sites. The police department, EMTs, are they aware of these sites? I hate to see them walking into a situation that they're not prepared for.
Yeah, so we have a full city emergency preparedness plan for hazmat responses, and the police department does have that. We do train on that, and we do ensure it's updated every year, that they're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Director Sloman, thank you for coming in tonight. Very thorough, nice presentation. On the fines for non-compliance, what if we be, we, we, we see a, a consistent person or a company or slash offender continuously getting fines and fines and fines, but doesn't look like they're going to, they're going to basically abide by the, by this, these, these fines and violations? What are we going to do at that point?
So through this ordinance, it clearly defines that we can issue an emergency shutdown directive, which we've done, done before.
So we can just shut them down?
But this clearly defines that, yes, we'll revoke their license to operate, which has happened with one facility in the city recently that had an extremely hazardous substance, and they were not reporting it, and they were also operating 20, 24 hours a day without ceasing operations for safety purposes. So it was, it was, it was a safety violation. We shut them down. So if they don't pay their fees on time, or they're not updating their quantities on hand, or accurately reporting their chemicals, we could, we could shut them down potentially with, with through this ordinance.
Who would be the enforcer? Who would be the person that, or entity that would shut them down?
It could be myself, it could be the police department, it could be the fire department.
Okay, so all three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any, any of the three that observe any type of catastrophic unsafe act could immediately shut them down through this ordinance.
Okay, I think that's important to, to, to let the public know that, you know. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, we do have a motion on the floor, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so that is it. We're going to go ahead and close the, oh, thank you. We're going to go ahead and close the ordinance committee meeting as of 7:34 PM.
Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, October 7th City Council Regular Meeting at 7:30 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Devine, Counselor DeBona, Counselor Harris, Counselor Liang, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Minton, President Kane.
Present.
Eight members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please stand, if you're able, for a moment of silence. Please use this moment as you will. Please turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
Number one, 2024-096, an appropriation for $1,800,000 for preliminary work for the new Squanam Elementary School.
And on this measure, it looks like we have Commissioner of Public Buildings Paul Heinz with us tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, counselors, for having me. I'm here again on the long overdue Squanam School project. Their original $1.5 million appropriation went to bringing on the designer and the OPM, and was intended to get us through the feasibility study phase, and it did. We had intended to go to the MSBA Board of Directors to be voted through to design development. The MSBA didn't put us on the calendar, the time that we were hoping for, which met our construction schedule. So last June, with the support of the mayor and this council, you appropriated another $1 million that allowed us to advance the project to go forward, because we're not allowed to enter into the project funding agreement with the MSBA and get the full appropriation until the MSBA Board of Directors has voted you into design development. The good news is, we are on the October 30th agenda with that Board of Directors, and we do anticipate a favorable recommendation by the MSBA staff to the approval of the development. by the MSBA staff to the approval of the development, design development phase of the project. I explained it to you before, but it's critical next summer, summer '25, there is a lot of work that needs to be done. And if it's not done next summer, then that throws off the sequencing with the project and the calendar year of the schools and the construction schedule. Just last week, we opened the bids for the modular classrooms. We need to get them on site early summer. We need to put foundations in the ground. We need to wire them into the life safety systems of the 1971 building, and also divorce the 1971 building for the remaining structures that will be demolished to create the footprint for the new building. So timing is very, very critical here. If we don't hit that running and do it right, we face two mobilizations for demolition of the building. We face moving the students partly through the school year. We face not having the electrical gear when we need it. And with the results of the last couple of hurricanes in the southeast of the United States, the critical supply chain issues with electrical gear are only going to get worse. So we are here tonight, obviously, for $1.8 million. This is not an additional $1.8 million. This will come off the top when we do come to the council for the full appropriation for the construction in the building of the Squanum Elementary School. I will gladly share with you that this afternoon, the Squanum School School Building Authority did vote to grant the construction management, construction manager at risk contract to Lee Kennedy and Company of Quincy. We had nine people submit, and seven came in for interviews. They were fantastic, very, very strong pool of candidates. Lee Kennedy rose to the top. They were almost $2 million in fees higher than the next two candidates. And through negotiations with them and Brian LaRoche of PCA 360, our OPM, we got them to come down $1.9 million in their fees. So they are quite anxious to do this job, and we're quite anxious to have them. This funding also helps us to bring them on board and get out the early packages to help us achieve our goals for next summer.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Anybody have questions or comments? Thank you. Counselor Harris?
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. And thanks for the work that you, obviously, you've put a lot of work into this. And I just ask that this is, this is something that's so, again, long overdue. We, that timeline is so vital. So hopefully, we make, does this go to committee, or do I make a motion to approve? Motion to approve on 2024-096. Thank you. Thank you again.
Motion to approve made by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counselor Liang. Anyone on the motion? Okay. So, sorry, is this, this is a different 1.8 that, didn't we have a 1.8 that came through last week? Is it the same? Okay. And the clever language for me was, this is not new appropriation. This is off the top of what would be assumed to be, assumed to come appropriation request.
Right. If there is a total project budget, this would be applied to that. So future funding would be reduced by June's vote and perhaps tonight's vote.
Got it. What's, what are we looking at for the total appropriation?
At this point, the total project cost is just under $1.9 million.
For the?
For the entire project?
Yeah.
Start to finish.
For the entire project? 1.9 million?
Excuse me, 109 million.
Thank you. That is a very cheap school.
I thought you smiled.
Let's do a number of them. Yeah, all right. So 109. Thank you. Great. All right. So Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Heinz. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number two, 2024-116, ordinance amending municipal.
Motion to waive the reading made by Counselor Liang and motion to move to ordinance, seconded by Counselor Campbell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number three, 2024-117, a gift for $800 from various donors for dear in the memory of Sergeant John Ryan.
Motion approved made by Counselor DeBona, seconded by Counselor Liang. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Devine, Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris, Counselor Liang, Counselor Minton, President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Number four, 2024-118, a gift for $4,025 from various donors to dear.
Motion approved, made by Counsel DeBona and seconded by Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Devine, Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris, Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
We still send thank you notes, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, that is the regularly scheduled agenda, approval of previous meeting minutes. Motion approved made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Campbell. All those in favor? Those opposed? The ayes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk?
I do have some traffic requests this evening to refer to ordinance committee for advertising. Ward one, Counsel McCarthy at a stop sign at Wampatuck Road at Norton Road. Ward two, Counselor Ash at a handicap parking at 39 Key Street. Ward four, Counselor Devine at handicap parking at 14A Intervale Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
39.
Unfinished business in preceding meeting, seeing none. Reports of committees. Chair Harris.
Thank you. We held a public hearing prior to the council meeting, 2024-109, utility grant application, national grid gas, Southern Ottery, Bayview Street, Rivers Street, Moore Street, Ram Street, and Silver Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, made by Chair Harris, seconded by Counsel DeBona. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
Then we had 2024-110, utility grant of location, national grid gas, Willet Street from Copeland Street to I-93 to Shutey Drive. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Positive recommendation, motion approved, made by Chair Harris, seconded by Counsel DeBona. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Sorry, sorry. Then we had 2024-111, utility grant of location, national grid gas, Furnessbrook Parkway at Lafayette Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Positive recommendation, motion approved, made by Chair Harris, seconded by Counsel DeBona. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell, Counselor Devine, Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Does that conclude your work, Chair Harris?
Yes, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Now recognizing ordinance chair, Liang.
Thank you. We're gonna start with two traffics out of my committee. The first is at Ward one, 2024-017, add no parking on the odd street of Edgemore Road from Adeline Place to Greenleaf Street. There's a positive recommendation out of committee.
Positive recommendation, motion approved made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. And then the last is 2024-108, add handicap parking at 98 Standish Ave. Positive recommendation out of committee.
Positive recommendation and motion approved made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash, Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. And then the other two are the ones that we had public hearings on earlier this evening. The first is 2024-041, ordinance amending zoning, MBTA bus here at 954 Hancock Street to open space. Positive recommendation out of committee.
Positive recommendation, motion approved made by Chair Liang, seconded by Counselor Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
And then the last is 2024-089, ordinance amending Chapter 175 hazardous materials, adding Section 6 hazardous chemicals, registration fees, fines, and response costs. Positive recommendation out of committee.
Positive recommendation, motion approved made by Chair Liang, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance. Recognizing Counselor Devine.
Thank you very much. At the end of May, a constituent, Mary Lucia, passed away at 98. She lived smack in the middle of Ward four. She's a very accomplished person. Basically, when she was born, Alfred Hitchcock had his first movie released. The first television that was even started was in 1926. So in the meantime, she had 14 siblings, and she has a son that I know well, Joseph. He comes here sometimes to the meetings. She, she lived in Dorchester, Jamaica Plain, Roxbury, but she wound up settling here 50 years ago. And in the meantime, she, she started, she, she worked during World War II as helping to the war effort at the Gillette in Boston. But then going into Quincy, she was very active with the Quincy Community Action Program, which is very successful. And she was there in the early days as a volunteer and then as a board of directors. I think most of us know Beth Ann Strollo. She's a very good friend of hers. She was recognized from this, this Quincy council for her efforts with Quincy Community Action Program, State Senate, and the House of Representatives, Bruce Ayers also, longtime friend and supporter. She started helping with handicap regulations, accessibilities, and all that when they were, they were just getting started. As a, she was a survivor of polio. And so she, she, there's so much to read here. Not to, she seemed to be a person that just did a lot of work on, on the, on the, on the low side. She didn't ask for credit. She didn't stand up here and say, hey, look at me. I'm very much impressed with this lady. And so for her whole life, she's basically done all these things that I see that are rules now, but she started some of them. So very impressive. She was also graduated from Mansfield Beauty Academy, but she was, I guess, exceptional singer and could play the piano just by ear. So I wanted to recognize her and thank her family and her, her son Joe for, for her being here. So just wanted to say thank you and have our family in their prayers. I also have one other, just the other day, another constituent, lives over by the St. Mary's Church, Rob Campbell. I guess he was known as Clem. I only know him as Rob. But I moved here 20 years ago, and I remember him clear as day because he was an extremely tall person, but quiet. And there was something about him. And we became very good friends, especially lately. He, he started out, he must have been just about 17 in the Marines. I think his mother might have had to sign for him to actually go in because he couldn't have been much more than that. He was born in 1941. And so he went into the Marines, and then he did a short time with, as a survey company, but he found his calling at, as a Boston city firefighter. He worked very hard at that for 30-plus years. He, he left behind his two sons and his wife, Eileen. Really strong, good family in Quincy. And on his last day, he was able to, he spent it with his youngest son and his wife on a boat, water skiing. And they have video of it. And it's just really, it's a, it's gonna hopefully be a nice memory for the family. But they, I wanted to keep them in our prayers and thoughts. He also dedicated his life to helping people. He went into, back in that time, there were some serious fires. I'm not saying the fire department doesn't have to work the same way, but we didn't have the same protections that they do now. So they were having a lot of, a lot more calls, a lot more dangerous ones. And I'm not taking away from firefighters today, but we, we try and protect our firefighters now, put them in safer conditions. And these early firefighters, they were, they were put in some difficult situations with not the proper gear. And he was one of them. And so say prayers and thoughts for the Campbell family. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Devine. President recognizes Counsel Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Similar to Counsel Devine, we, there's a lifelong 99-year-old resident that was with her today, who I think was really a Renaissance woman, an exceptional family, Marie de Limpio. She was born Marie Brichuti. She was born, married in 1946 to James de Limpio, and they had six wonderful children, Anne Marie, James, Dominic, Rita, Suzie, and Nancy. They had 19 grandchildren, 16 great-grandchildren, and she was lucky enough to see her fifth generation, great-great-grandchild born recently, and it was on the front page of the Quincy Sun, Marie. She started working as a secretary at the shipyard back in World War II. So she, that's where she started her career, when they, when they first got married. And she moved over to the Patriot Ledger, where she wrote obituaries, and also she would report on the council. I don't know if there's a connection there, but she reported on the Quincy City Council. She did obituaries for local people, and is very, very warm and loving and very helpful. Maybe to this area best known as Marie's Kitchen in the Quincy Sun. The amount of clippings that we have in our house that we've never actually tried to make, I think in dedication, we'll, we'll try to make them for her at some point. But she and her daughter Suzie really did a great job with that. And, you know, I think everybody, maybe in this, this building, and of course, the city, I think probably knows someone who's someone who knows this family and has a close relation. Her granddaughter Jenna and I graduated together. And her comments were, we were blessed to have her with us all these years. We missed her checking in on all of us, her words of wisdom, and her beautiful stories from the past. She was one of a kind for sure. And I think that's something that will definitely carry with us. And as her, another granddaughter, Bella said, that the knockies will taste a little bit better in heaven now with her there. So I wanted to extend feelings from the entire council and let them know that we're thinking of them.
Thank you, Counsel Campbell. Okay. President recognizes Counsel Ash.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, similarly to Counselor Devine, there have been two deaths that I can recall since our last meeting of members of prominent Ward two Quincy Point families. I'd like to start off by recognizing Linda, the family of Linda Travers. Linda Travers passed away at 85 years old on September 13, 2024. Although she was not born in Quincy Point, you would never have guessed that. She's, they. She's, they lived on Wit Nav with her, at different iterations of her six children for the last 55 years. Her husband Dick has affectionately remembered, remembered from running St. Joseph's Basketball League in the 80s. She leaves Dick behind as well as children. Her obituary reads, "Mr. Travers and Richard J. Travers and his wife Noriko of Atkinson, New Hampshire, James Travers and his wife Donna of Hanson, Mary Lynn Travers of Quincy, and Patricia Sutterly and her husband Ken of Kentucky." Linda was just a joy and a wonderful woman that I've had the pleasure of knowing for quite some time. So my thoughts and prayers go out to Dick, Mary, the Scolaros, and also Bobby Allison for the loss of Linda Travers. Secondly, certainly not least, certainly, secondly but not least, Robert A. Pettenelli Jr., Quincy Fire Department, retired, passed away last week, Saturday, September 28th, at his home. The Pettenellis are also a very big, wonderful, involved, great Quincy Point family. And I know a lot of my fellow colleagues on the council know of the Pettenelli family or maybe even Robert Pettenelli. Mr. Pettenelli served as a private in the United States Marine Corps, working as an aviation ordinance technician in the late 1970s and early 1980s. He was very proud to be a Quincy firefighter. He was appointed to the department on November 9th, 1985, and retired on April 27th, 2007, after 22 years of service. He was assigned to Engine Four in Wallaston for many years. Mr. Pettenelli was a member of Tori di Pasieri Social Club in Quincy, where he enjoyed playing bocce and made many friendships. He was a volunteer at the Boston Home in Dorchester, where he shared his humor and love of life with daily interaction amongst the patients. He was especially fond of his two dogs, Junior and Buddy, and often took them to Stoddart's Neck in Hingham. Devoted brother of Marie Lumigini, Ronald A. Pettenelli and his wife Diane, and Richard A. Pettenelli, and his wife Deanne of Kingston. So certainly, my thoughts, prayers, and condolences go out to the Pettenelli-Lumigini-Bolton families on the loss of retired Quincy firefighter, Robert Pettenelli. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. President recognizes Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. Heavy heart with the Cattirelli family, with Patricia Cattirelli passing away at the age of 84. She was proud to be a registered nurse. She, she was employed by the former Boston City Hospital and retired in 1998. She served as a union negotiator during her time there. During her retirement, Pat went on to work as an administrative nurse at the Quincy High School for 18 years. She formed many friendships and colleagues at both the hospital and the Quincy Public Schools. Most of all, Pat was devoted to her family, especially her grandchildren. She relished her time spent with them. She was devoted mother of Andrew Cattirelli and Joe Cattirelli, both of Quincy, and Scott DiMarco and Pamela DiMarco, stepmother of Peter, Peter Cattirelli and his wife Katrina, the twins, Michael Cattirelli and his, and his wife Sam Mark Cattirelli, and preceded by Dennis Cattirelli, Leo Cattirelli Jr. and her surviving wife Edith, and Christopher Cattirelli. Loving grandmother of Marissa, Joseph, and Brian Cattirellis and the Leos. It's a big family, so there's a lot of Cattirellis involved in that she leaves behind. She was a former wife of the late Leo Cattirelli, Sr., which was a very funny, funny guy that I got to know. Please keep your, the Cattirelli family in your thoughts and prayers. Good standing family in Quincy. I'd also like a heavy heart with Jean Cristiani at the age of 82. She began her career as a secretary at the Boston University, where she met her late husband Vincent. She was a school psychologist for the city of Boston, where she started, I was just a kindergarten teacher in 1972. And she wore many hats through her career. And she, you know, became an educational psychologist at Massachusetts. She worked on almost every school in the city of Boston. And, you know, she leaves behind her family. She was also a member of the Council on Aging Board here in Quincy and the Democratic City Committee, as well as the Boston, and served on the Boston Teachers Union, retired teachers legislative committee. She was at Great Faith, and she began her active parish activities at the St. John the Baptist Church and Our Lady Good Council Church, both in Quincy. She loved to read, she knit, and she was devoted to her family. She, she was the beloved wife of 57 years of the late Dr. Vincent Cristiani, as well as mother of Angela Cristiani, Dr. Vincent Cristiani, John Cristiani, which is part of the Quincy Fire Department, and his wife Tracy, all of Quincy. Loving grandmother of Vincent, Sophia, Lana, Amanda, and Johnny, a veteran of the United States Coast Guard. And she was the dear sister of John DiStefano and surviving wife Marie. She also had many surviving nieces, nephews, and other families. So if you could keep the Cristiani thoughts and prayers for the family going through this tough time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel DeBona. Is that all? President recognizes Counsel Harris.
Thank you. Just two things. First, you know, the, the news that's coming out of the Gulf in Florida, you know, there's so many of my constituents that are down in Florida. They spend the winter there and are there, and they're facing another challenge. This is two in a row. This, this, this monster of a storm is, is heading right to them. Milton, Milton. So it's, it's just, I just, thoughts and prayers that hopefully everybody is safe. The last storm that just happened is, is, is already too many, too many lives lost, over 230, I believe, lost on the previous storm. But again, our thoughts and prayers are with everybody down, down in the southern part of our country. And then on another note, on a personal privilege, I, I'm still on Portugal time. I, I actually voted on 2024 when it came out of commit, when it came in front of us, 2024-041, the ordinance amending zoning, MBTA bus yard. Could you please eliminate my vote from the tally?
Madam Clerk, will you please...
Of course.
Thank you.
Remedy that situation.
Thank you for the remedy. Thank you.
All set. Counsel Harris.